It's nine o'clock. We will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings will follow the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted through the end through the room. We do reserve the right to go into closed session at any time to discuss any agenda item on the agenda in both meetings. We also reserve the right to take items out of order for the convenience of those in the public. I think that our first order of business today is to open with prayer. If you would join me, Our dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, especially this time of the year, for the many blessings that we have, not only around this table but in this country. We would just ask that you allow us each a moment to reflect on those blessings. We would ask that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves, both locally and throughout the country. Especially ask a prayer for those of those who protect these many rights of ours, both here and abroad, and those in our police services and first responders. We would ask that you bless this meeting. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen. Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on December 16th, 2024, if you're so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on December 16th of 2024.
Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Next item are the claims and treasures receipts. In the late, we have had a pre-review of those on a shortened list. Intertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Uller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Our next item is designation of an official county newspaper for legal.
World.
Oh, I missed one, sorry. Oh, thank you. You could tell how excited I was, couldn't you? Receive an order filed, a fee report submitted by the county sheriff. I think we have a copy of that for review earlier. I entertain a motion, if you're so inclined, to make one.
My motion would be to approve the, receive the, and approve the sheriff's fee report in the amount $2,368.04.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Yeah. The next agenda item is designation of an official newspaper, our county newspaper for legal notices for 2025. In opening this, I need to, full disclosure, say that, as I'm guessing maybe more than myself had, received a call from George Lobby, who I believe is the editor of the North Platte Bulletin, asking for our consideration for that paper. He made some stats about numbers and those kinds of things, so I just wanted to put that out and said he would not be able to be here because of a commitment of getting the newspaper published or something. Having said that.
Joe, can I say something? I'm the one that put this on here. Normally, we don't do this until January, but I got mail from NDOT asking that we have it in by the 31st of December this year for our official designation, which is unusual.
That's unusual because I was gonna.
So that's why I put it on.
Oh, okay.
That's the only reason.
Who asked for it?
NDOT. They want to know who our legal paper was going to be by the 31st of December, which they normally ask for in January, like after we organize.
Reorganization.
They ask for it by December 31st. This is our last meeting before then, so.
Can I ask Jason a question?
You may. Anybody's, feel free.
Jason, at NACO, you guys had several sessions with NDOT. Did they talk about the early request at all?
I didn't hear anything about that. We did have a workshop at NACO at the annual conference stating that there was a website that the counties could be using for official publishing as well.
You're correct, Chris. Elaine Menzel did a presentation on Nebraska public notices, and the website is anypublicnotice.com, and that came about because of LB 287. They had some amendments and revisions in chapters 84 through 1411, but I don't know. Becky, has your office seen any?
No, I just got the same information you guys did at NACO, but I believe we still have to work with the paper somehow to get it on the website.
We do, yes. It was kind of my impression, and I may not have it correct. I went and looked for some printed information on it and didn't have a lot of luck in finding anything that was kind of condensed, but I thought one of the reasons was that not everything needs to be put in the print newspaper now, that some of it can just go on this website, but I may not be correct.
I don't know if that's totally correct. I know they have been a lot of legislation, Nebraska Press is working with the legislature on different things with that, but I haven't heard that that's actually the way it is now.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure that I had gotten that exact information out of the short presentation that we had.
And I did not recognize the person's name on the correspondence from NDOT, so I don't know if this is a new person that maybe is taking, helping with this division. I don't know, and it's not in my packet, so.
Well, you know, I also sent, or listened to Elaine. And I will recognize you in a second to speak as I have for, or as somebody has for at least the last 40 years, so before saying that, I think that's a good supplement or backup. I think with that question, we need to have a paper of legal notice myself.
Oh, absolutely. They, that was part of the conversation. Like, most things still need to be published, but not everything in print.
I suppose a question I would have, is it just limited to one? I, for the life of me, can't remember. I researched this at one point, but I can't.
I think the way it reads is a newspaper of general circulation, and there used to be some other things, but I think if we read it, I think it says, and Jason, you can look it up, Tyler, but I think it says a. I don't know if that means anything, but I would think that to be consistent, we would want to stay, I would think we would want to stay with one, whoever is, simply that if a person is looking always in one place, kind of like our meeting, that we need somewhere else sometime to talk, so, but I don't know, Chris, for sure. Having said that, is there anybody in the audience that would make, like to address this issue?
I would like to.
Please come forward and identify yourself, if you would, and sign in and welcome.
Okay, good morning. First off, I want to thank you for giving me the time on your agenda this morning to speak with you. On the North Platte.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Oh, yes, I'm Dee Klein.
Thank you, Dee.
Good morning, dear.
And you're with who?
I am the publisher of the North Platte Telegraph.
Thank you.
There you go. Sorry, I missed that one. I wrote it down, but I didn't say it. So the North Platte Telegraph has always appreciated being designated the official newspaper of Lincoln County, and I have to stress this, it has never been taken for granted, and it has never been taken lightly. The North Platte Telegraph strives daily to deliver the news as readers want to consume it, print, digital, desktop, tablet, and mobile. We reach the largest audience in Lincoln County. The legals are available all across our audience platforms. Our print edition and our website edition has over 800,000 to a million page views a month. Shelley, I believe, has always provided excellent customer service and will continue to do that with Rebecca and the staff here at your offices. I am respectively requesting that the North Platte Telegraph be designated the official newspaper of Lincoln County for 2025.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of them.
If I have a question, I have an observation, Dee.
Yeah.
This is not, you know, you guys do a great job, and I think the Bulletin does as well. I think you both serve our constituents well, or the publics need to know. So, full disclosure on my part, I read you both. I read the Telegraph online, and I read the Bulletin online. The reason I don't subscribe to your paper in the print media is because I can't afford it. So that's, this is my observation. My only thought in this is some of our citizens, I think, are disenfranchised with being provided with information because they can't afford the Telegraph anymore at this point. It's not, it's not perhaps your problem or mine, but it's just something that I'm aware of that gives me pause, and the only reason I would say I wish we could publish in both local publications is for that reason, for accessibility, because I know, again, this is on the individual, it's not you guys, I'm making it more of a conversation for the board, but I just see that as a negative, you know, a negative impact as far as getting the word out.
I could second that. I know I have friends and neighbors that do not subscribe because of the cost. That did cause me pause when I did pre-up, caused me pause at that expense, but that's what I did. But there are people in this county that don't receive that publication and that opportunity for those public notices.
Well, we do, we do offer all the legals, or before, above, before the paywall, so you can read the legal notices on our website without being a subscriber.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
You know, I guess one comment that I would make is, for the past year, we've, to the best of my knowledge, at every meeting with the exception of maybe one or two, today being one of them, there's a very nice young lady that sits right over in that corner where that gentleman's sitting and covers our meeting from beginning to end. I personally appreciate that where somebody takes the time to send a representative vote to cover our full meeting and not pick it up from another source, or pick it up from the TV or from a broadcast. That's just a personal observation that I make, and I appreciate the job that Caitlin does, by the way. She does a great job for you guys.
I, I'm going to add to that. I concur with what Commissioner Williams said. I am a subscriber to the online. It's, it has increased in cost considerably in the last few years. I'm willing to invest in that because I do like being informed and, and I feel like, and I also read the Bulletin online, too. For me, one of the reasons is the gentleman sitting in the back of the room and the detail and the reliability of the information of Todd's articles, not just about our meetings, but about what's going on with the city meetings also. So, but I will say, I think we are all aware that our upcoming budget year is going to be a very challenging one, and cost matters. So for me to make a vote today, or, or any day, I would like to see some cost comparisons.
Legals, the price of legals are set by the state, and so every newspaper has to follow that, that.
So it's exactly the same, no matter.
No matter where you go.
That is good to know.
I think the biggest difference would be as many, how many people you reach, that would be the biggest difference.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. I did not realize that. I thought it, each individual newspaper had their own price ranges for.
It is set by this, it is set by the state.
So we're not the only ones that have a lot of mandated.
No. That rate had not been changed for many, many years until just.
They just did like a, they passed it last year.
Yeah, prior to that, it had not.
I think last October, actually, is when they passed it to change it.
And I, I know that there's been some changes in the past couple of years as far as how often you actually have a distributed print paper.
Yep.
Can you give me some more information on that?
Yes, we go from, we print three days a week, so, you know, as every business goes, we always are looking at, you know, one of the things we looked at is how people are consuming our news, and if you look at the data, people consume our news, we substantially more online than they did the print edition. So in doing that, that's how we shifted our model, would go into three days a week of print, and we do more, we do seven days a week now, online, and that's why we did that from that research, from that data.
So now, I not only get the, make one person upset with my comment, I get to make two people upset, okay? I, too, have a concern about your print cost. We've taken the newspapers since we came back to North Platte, probably will be ending our subscription because of that and going solely online. Now we get it, so we can go online and get it also. And Becky, now I'm going to make you upset, okay? If you notice, the minutes of most other meetings, they're very short minutes, the school board motion, Smith, this, that, and is, is this. Our minutes that we print, and it's per the amount that we print, that's how we pay, are pretty much just the recorded minutes of the meeting. I mean, you know, it's a very long, long agenda, rather than motion Williams on this and second, and so I think that we could save a considerable amount of cost, a considerable amount of cost, by abbreviating our minutes and going back to the motion and second and the vote.
I suppose, and just for conversation's sake, that I would disagree with that. I think every opportunity we have to get information in front of the public on what transpired during our meeting, we should be taking, and I really don't have, I don't have a problem with the length of what we've added in the minutes, but at the same time, we also have live streaming, and it's as easy as, and that's, I believe it's already included, the link to the live stream, so people can have that afforded to them to see exactly what transpired during the meeting. So, again, sake of conversation on that point.
How much would the savings be if it was more reduced in its volume of words?
I don't know. Joe's right. I mean, basically, my motions now are proven, it's motion carried. I mean, I've done that. The only time I really add any length is if there's a lot of conversation or, you know, maybe not controversy about things.
No.
But you guys gotta remember, by law, we have to post all the claims. You have to have the who's paid, what it's for, and the dollar amount, and that is our, that's a big cost, depending on how many claims are, those have to be in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Point well taken. Thank you, Becky.
Yeah, so I do use two sets of minutes.
Thank you.
So, Joe, you're, you said that the Bulletin had reached out to you. They also, I think we probably all got it the same text message, and George said that he put a bid in, so I guess that's why it made me think that there was, might be a difference in.
I think that was his nomenclature.
For that he was.
Requesting.
Requesting, okay. I guess that's why I thought there might be a differential in cost to the.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did say bid, but there is no, there is no bid from the.
He said, where you to give them.
Yeah.
It doesn't vary, you know how long it are.
Yeah, it is per line, yeah.
I suppose, from my standpoint, and I count, you know, the staff at both institutions as, as friends, and I appreciate the work that's done by both institutions as far as the press is concerned for print and online. Having the clarification that the rate for legal notices is mandated by the state, I would probably defer my favor toward that's going to have more print per week put out to the public, and so it would be my motion that we designate the North Platte Telegraph as the official county newspaper for legal notices for 2025.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion amongst just the board now?
I would be interested to see circulation numbers between the two publications, but was that, was that part of the information that George shared?
I have no knowledge of the circulation of either publication, personally.
Our, our circulation is just over 3,000 print edition each day. Online, it's 800,000 to a million a month.
Oh, wow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Thank you.
Further discussion to that question, I think that's very pertinent for consideration the next time around. We have an abbreviated amount of information.
Well, and the reason I asked, I think last year, when you came in here, Dee, you did tell us circulation numbers, and I remember being impressed with the online one.
Yeah.
It's nice to see that people, that we're not killing all those trees. And although I will say I do miss having the newspaper to wrap all of my Christmas stuff in when I put it away.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And if Shelley can do anything, you know, just reach out, we'll do whatever.
I can work with Dee, and we can find out more about the legislation.
Yeah, we can do that, too.
What we can do as far as online and websites.
Thank you.
Next item is the Board of Equalization. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convenes the Lincoln County Board of Equalization again following the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted through the room. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held December 16th, 2024. Intervene a motion.
Mr. Chairman, it would be my motion that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held December 16th, 2024.
Second.
This is from last week on the radar.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, Mr. Convene the Correction and Repunishment submitted by the county assessor. I see none. Thank you, Julie. Are there any other items to come before us, Becky, on the Board of Equalization? And did you get the time that we went into the Board of Equalization? Okay, it's 9:24. We will now adjourn as Lincoln County Board of Equalization reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. I believe we have some more claims to sign. I don't, I don't believe there's a need for a closed session. Is there, Tyler?
Ball, humbug is what he said.
There you go.
All right. I got carried away and signed one twice, so you're going to have to sign out there.
I don't need to sign. If you've signed twice, we'll still have five signatures.
I squiggled it out. Details matter. I figured I'd be proactive instead of waiting for.
I'm not trying to be hard to get along with, I just.
For the remarks.
Going along. So Mr. Lindemeyer, over the weekend, is sure working hard to try to find some replacements in his office to, and a few judges will be gone, etc. Tough one.
Two, two attorneys.
Well, yeah, there are two former judges.
Former judges that are attorneys.
Just bring a lot of, a lot of institutional, a lot of.
I think we're gonna be dealing with retirements, and we have a lot of people that have been serving us for 25, 35 years.
Long time. Which probably bodes well for the county and our employees, and we're boasting each other, Tim. Jason, it would appear that your crews could probably use a little moisture on the roads, couldn't they?
Yes, we could.
But I wanted to tell you, at least in my area, the roads that I drive, they, in spite of those setbacks, they've done a marvelous job of keeping things reasonably good. So I would have you extend that gratitude to them, because they've, I think they've done a pretty good job, everything considered.
I will do that, yeah, they have done a great job, but the road guys have, keep things together, no moisture.
Folks in the country appreciate not having as much, uh.
Sure.
Worschborn roads, appreciate it.
We could, we could use some moisture, but we'll take it in the form of a nice warm rain and not snow. It is dry out.
Ball, humbug.
These are the ones I wish we could do something about. Gosh, we spend a lot of money on, on legal stuff.
Yeah, Joe, the days are starting to get longer already.
They are.
Yeah, I can really tell it's morning.
Just now.
Not very many minutes.
First day.
Not very minute, man, many minutes a day, but still.
Dick's birthday is the shortest day of the year, and then we gain one minute a day every day after that.
Actually, this is, I think, this time period is the same with the summer solstice. For just a few days, the time, sunrise and sunset move in the same direction.
Interesting.
I followed on my watch, so I've been following that. And so, yes, we're already gained a couple of minutes on the sunset, but sunrise is also through the couple of minutes that direction, too.
Oh, so it balances out.
It won't last much longer.
Yeah.
Maybe a couple more days at most, so, it is, that's the way it is as the planet is tilting.
It's amazing how, you know, a minute a day, or a couple minutes a day, all of a sudden, it's like, oh my gosh, it's 6 o'clock and it's still light outside.
One thing about it, I'm pretty consistent, Chris.
That's why I signed twice, Joe.
You know, I'm just gonna have to come through Chris first, that way.
There were two folded sheets, one inside of the other, for, one for roads and one for sheriff way at the back.
That's okay, Chris, I'll check it. You know, you would think the person sitting to my right would probably fold it over or something, so that she knew it, but you would not.
I signed, I signed all of them, some of them twice.
There you go.
If I can do it, you can do it, too.
That's right.
I, I would like to point out that I did have to pass at least one of those back to Commissioner Weems, but I didn't make a big deal out of it.
And I don't, that should be the end of the day, but with how this has been going this morning, I really don't have a.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have, if I only had to add number one back.
We might as well end the year the way we started it, right? Giving each other a hard time.
I'm gonna get him involved in that conversation, because he coordinates so much stuff for us, we need, he needs to know.
Wow, that surprises me how much that is.
No, but he, he ends up in our chair.
How come we're two roads?
One's sheriff, one is roads.
My building is considerably smaller, of course, it's not insulated.
Yeah, but we only need to keep it 40 degrees.
Right, you know, and then I'll have Booker checking.
Yeah, see what, what the temperature is.
Well, I know I was in there, and it, it's chilly, I mean, it's chilly.
Well, it should be.
Yes, it should be.
You're right, that is a.
That's surprising how much that is, because I've never noticed it being that, that high. I'll check into it.
There are two, the top one's only on the inside.
You know, maybe we should have stored putting everything that needs temperature control in this one building. They're sorry about that.
You're very thorough.
And turn the heat off.
We've got signatures on all, both of them, is that okay?
Yeah. I just, Eric got stuff written on the wall.
They only get one paycheck this month.
Yeah.
Better make sure that water doesn't get up in the dive team there. Almost made it. Almost a great Christmas.
Probably shut that off in the winter time.
Not really, if they do.
Jerry, if I was gonna do that, it would be the road department.
Maybe you were working on that, so.
If I was on across the street, I would.
Doesn't need more discussion.
Right. No, you have a point. You know, when I was looking for energy update projects, I don't think I ever did reach out to Scotty, and see, we have, we have some funds there, so maybe that would be a good expenditure.
I saw that.
I guess insulation always is.
It's made a huge difference.
Don't have a choice, do we?
I mean, that minor, insulation and minor package on the new building.
I saw that, actually.
Look at how low that bill was.
By the way, you changed your format, so I opened it from my phone now.
I didn't do any of that.
Maybe IT.
I know, Tim.
OBT or something like that, I don't know what it is. I knew it worked, but.
My MacBook will open it, one would not, down, so.
I just got that figured out, I asked him about it.
It must work some magic, because I can open it from my phone.
Because Tammy can.
I'm glad to see your office not having to go through any of this corrective tape, Becky. We, I keep an eye on that.
What was it?
Correction tape, corrective tape.
To white out all my signatures that I duplicated.
Don't do that on paper.
As part of our conversation, did people ever talk to anybody over at North Platte Land and Land Company about the workers?
No. Did you guys?
James did.
Good.
They'll be included in the conference.
Good deal. She's my neighbor, so we have a lot of conversations about it.
Well, we're signing, uh, concerns from department heads, elected officials, anybody? I'm glad to see your office not having to go over any of this corrective tape, Becky. We, I keep an eye on that.
What was it?
Correction tape, corrective tape.
To white out all my signatures that I duplicate. Karen, as part of your conversation, did you guys ever talk to anybody over at work at my company about the workers?
No. Did you guys?
Jay did. Good. Big deal. She's my neighbor, so we have a lot of conversations about it.
We should follow Ken's lead. He stopped passing those things down here quite a while ago. You can stop passing them down.
I'm just about there, Joe.
Thank you. While we're signing concerns from department heads, elected officials, anybody? Anybody have a committee report they would like to give?
Jerry had been having a conversation about fee structure, and then we discussed them. Room control. And I think we're gonna finalize those for, over the first week of January and bring back to everybody.
Thank you.
And at least he and I have a common thread, and that is to establish my prior fee for the first visit, as does any other vendor that you call to provide service, because we're obviously not recouping our expenses for the fee we need to. That's probably a flavor of what we'll bring forward. See what y'all think.
Appreciate it and appreciate more just the, just the, just thinking about it, you know, and knowing that next year's gonna be a, I hope we all do that on any committees that we have that. Thank you.
Every dollar's gonna count, that's for sure.
I, thanks to Tammy's help, distributed a little preview of some suggestions on some rules and regulations. I want you to take those home, look at them, mark them up, bring them back, and over the next couple of weeks, maybe we can discuss them a little bit, any changes or additions or deletions we want, keeping in mind, in my opinion, that should be a living document. That is, that's a outline or a start to think that probably once or twice a year, maybe we review that going forward and, you know, just, just my thought. And Jerry, thank you. I know Jerry and I have some work, so either one of us just make a comment. Thank you.
I think everything that we have as far as fee should be looked at every year or so.
You know, maybe that's, maybe that's something to be put in there, you know, you know, look at our fee structure here and, you know.
Otherwise, if we don't, it's easy for it to go two decades without being updated, so.
Yep. I agree. In these inflationary times, even one year can make a difference. That's my kind of claim right there.
Yeah. That one and the last one.
Yeah, probably better.
Now, that might be some good discussion. We look at those large claims coming through on our legal end for our legislature in the next couple of years as to, you know, as our part of the partnership, we provide a place for them to do this, take care of the heat, the air conditioning, the building, the heat, and maybe since there are state crimes that they're acting on, rather than the county be responsible for all those legal returning fees, maybe it should be the state, after all, we're merely accommodating the state function somehow. At least be a good starting point for conversation, I know. Think that street should go both ways instead of just coming downhill all the time. Maybe this will be our last meeting this year.
Mr. Chairman, have you heard anything from the chamber?
No, I was gonna go down and make a phone call with Tyler. You read my remarks. They...
I said they didn't act on that quickly, so.
Yeah, they haven't put anything in. I thought rather than, maybe a phone call might be the best way. Any other business come before the county? Oh, we do have.
Yep.
Well, there is other business come before the county, isn't there? I guess maybe I ought to read my agenda there. Okay, we got our commissioner of committee reports, so we will conduct a quarterly inspection of the Lincoln County Detention Center. Might be the last one we do this year.